To it.
Oh, actually, I can, we had been doing basketball in kindergarten, so we did that today.
I saw a bunch of cars coming, that was my thing.
Yeah, I got you if you call it. Their listening skills haven't quite developed by that.
All right, so I'm gonna call this board's elections meeting to order for March 2nd. Role copy of myself, Pam Alley, Jake Thompson, and Phil Crossman attending virtually. Donald Poole is absent. Andy Dortel manager and Elizabeth Bunker deputy town clerk. Prove agenda, and will we prove the agenda is presented? Seconded by Pam Alley, all those in favor? And then Phil, if you would say yay or nay?
Yay.
Eight minutes, approved minutes from the February 16th meeting.
I move.
Moved by Phil Crossman, seconded by Pam Alley, all those in favor?
Yay.
Approved and signed treasures warrant number 35, so moved. Seconded by Pam Alley, all those in favor?
Yay.
Seen no communications, speakers on the floor. We have anyone other than town staff?
It's just those four folks on the, or three folks on the.
Okay. There are no speakers on board. Committee and department reports and appointments, road commissioners report. Oh, Stacey, road commissioner said the sand pile is doing low, like, how low is low?
I haven't seen it recently, but they, we did order the, the thunder guards. I don't know where it is at today, we can go up straight behind you guys.
Oh. Shut the channel.
Hopefully, there's no more, you know, big cold snaps after today, but.
Yeah, I think the biggest, the biggest challenge has been the ice again, and last year, same thing, it's just mild and icy.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll go on to sewer, sewer department.
So, back in November, the samples I get sent over for testing, a couple, one of them, or a couple of them came back out, out of the allowed, out of compliance, and it was mostly due to they were too clear, they couldn't remove enough solids from it, it came right after a big rain event. There's usually enough time in the month to be able to submit another one to prove that we're still in compliance, but I think there was something about the timing of when those happened, and I think that was during like Thanksgiving timeframe too, it just, they couldn't get a second one in, I think was part of the issue, before the month ended. So it triggers the need for a follow-up from the state and then for us to then respond to that, that check-in. From that, they did identify a few things that they need, they needed the department, the sewer plant to come in the compliance with, which was infiltration of that water, we need to identify where that's coming from and correct that, and come up with a kind of a policy or a plan acknowledging not only that fix, but just generally how that happens. Will, like provided you a copy of what was, what Will worked up to send back to the state, just acknowledging, hey, this is what we've been working on, we understand, we've, he's drafted some SOPs that would create a good overview of what's required each month. Scroll down through here, he's done this, give you a copy, a copy of what one of those looks like, just going through a few of the things that they need to check off each month, the different testing, there's, there's certain things that have to be done on a quarterly basis, and then as soon as, with May through September, I think is when we turn the UV system on, so there's another set of tests required when that gets turned on. So this, this procedure, this checklist that he kind of came up with helps visualize those things and make sure that we're able to stay on top of that. The big thing coming out of that, I think, is really the need to, they identified, we don't have anything, we haven't yet inspected or jetted the lines, and it's still a very new system relative to others in the state, but we do, the insurance company noted that as something they want to see us come up with, they recommended inspecting them and jetting them every three years. The folks from the state were looking more at five years they recommended, so Will's proposing that we try to come up with a budget of, you know, a way to budget on a five-year cycle to jet the lines, inspect and jet them. And then to probably start with the downtown main street area first, because that's where a lot of the rest, all the restaurants are, if there's gonna be an issue, it's probably gonna be maybe from, maybe from grease or other things from those businesses, so we thought we would start with that one next year, and just spread that, those costs over five years instead of trying to do every three. I think the number he's gotten from one company so far, I believe, is in the ballpark of 40 grand.
A year or?
To be able to do the whole system. It's a big, it's a big, a big amount that Pam knows to try and put on any one year, with the other expenses needed on it with a small amount of users. So again, spreading that cost over three or five years will pay twice in three or maybe five times for the transportation, but, you know, the big chunk of the actual line cleaning and inspecting will be spread out, you know, at a much more manageable rate, so. Nothing that requires follow-up from you at this time, just more letting you know, we've acknowledged it, they responded, and there's a plan in place to try and make sure that doesn't happen again. There's not much we can do if it's rained a lot, or a lot of fresh water's gotten into the system, it's, you know, there's not a lot of solids to begin with, so it's hard to remove.
Well, we have that bad place, that bad pump station down on Lanes Island that, that gets a lot of rainwater, that's, that's not good, but, well, hopefully, we can remedy that some point, we'll get some money.
Yeah, Lanes Island gets a lot because of the runoff and the way it's designed, and also the one by the ball ground, that was, you know, trying to time when it's flooded and cat, you know, the water's restricted, and when we release it, you know, it makes a big difference, you know, if we're holding that water back and it's not able to drain out, a lot of times it'll end up getting into that, that system too. So it'll be a similar issue, but that's one that at least we can have a little more control over.
When you say Lanes Island, does it cross the bridge?
No, it's down by, um, team built and standing there, yeah, on that side. Will and I discussed, I think it was Will and I, the fact that we should, the board of slot, we should take a tour of the plant this spring, when the UV gets, probably when the UV gets implemented again, so that it's easy to understand what we're talking about.
Right. Yeah, those new control panels will be going in, I think, in April.
Yeah.
That'll be a good point to, yeah, get in there, and we, there are some other challenges, the, the pump stations have their own control panels, so it's an automated pump system, and one of them, I think the one on Leo's lane failed, the control panel itself failed, so they're, right now, I think, on a manual still, I don't know if they've gotten that in yet. Same challenge, the control panels are becoming obsolete, you might find some refurbished ones with no guarantee of how long those will last, and I think the cost for those are about four grand each, we'll finding, which, last I talked to, he's still waiting on the price for a newer model, newer version of that, but to try and start replacing those with the new ones as those go up, you know, go out, and another one of these, just that time, you know, the system's now fit, what, 24, 20 years now?
Two thousand four, I think, in one line.
A little bit, so, it was starting to see, these are the natural cycles of some of these components, so we phased that out.
It's expensive, what's that?
I'm still in high school, not being.
I just got out of high school, Eric.
Yeah. Fifty years earlier. Okay, let's go on to capital projects and our engineering board.
So we're getting much more regular updates from Wooden Incurn. They've got another person working on that, so Brent and Megan aren't the only ones, and so they are now coming weekly, so I'll make sure to push those to you as I get them, include the last two weeks there, I just got another one yesterday, so I'll send that out tomorrow.
I thought this was great, by the way, the report.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there's a lot going on, as you know, just hit on the big ones that you can see on the screen there. The follow-up, the report that came this week, updates on the, on the projects, we did post a quick update on the Facebook page about the bridge, that the temporary road is now in use, it is a one-lane, a wide one-lane, the stop lines on both, stop signs on both sides, along with the wind, just kept them up still. And the sightline should be such that you'd be able to see if someone's at the other stop line. You know, so that, that is planned to be utilized until they're able to complete the crossing again, the current bridge will be, over the next three weeks, taken apart, the footings will be going in towards the end of March, and the, if everything's on schedule, the, the pre-cast will be able to be out here before, by the end of March as well, we'll be able to start putting that in, so they should be on schedule pending any other significant weather events, but that should be moving, moving forward. The garage project is moving along, the, I've been able to get up there at least once a week, just checking on progress there, last time I was up there on Friday, and they were finishing up the, the second half of the roof, and then continuing with the framing of the interior walls.
Are you gonna be going up this week? I'd like to go.
Sure.
Let me know if you would, please.
Um, but that's, you know, great work going on up there, the salt shed, we've, we've chosen the, well, we've, we're trying to work with them on when they'll be able to come out and to start putting that together, and the companies, that they're using for the pre-cast basement blocks, all the pre-cast materials seem to be behind, even the bridge project was delayed, and so while they're waiting for the rest of the pre-cast to be formed, to then get out here, and they also want to see that pad thawed out before they put everything on there, which makes sense to us, we also don't have much in the way of housing for the crew to be able to stay in, so we thought if we could get them to come out, they're looking to come out, I think, in May, which the crew from the garage will, you know, be out, more housing will be available, all the material will be here by then, we should definitely be out of the thaw by then. And so that, that did get pushed back a little bit, but some of it's a little out of our control, doesn't change the cost, we locked in contract price, so just need to work with them on that.
What was the price on that? Can, I, I don't recall.
Oh, I think, I think we're, it was like, was it like 260, I think, for the, for the shed? Hundred sixty thousand, I believe. Any questions on any of those projects? There are a few other things that they're working on for us, work orders for high street sidewalk, work order for the vinyl co, North Haven Road flooding issue that we have going on. I asked for work orders for that to put in the budget for next year for some preliminary design, so we can get some numbers and concepts going, and they're also gonna try and work up a work order for a grant to be able to work on, and design for the boat launches downtown.
Great, I think they're doing very well there. Would now be a good time to talk about the transfer station layout, even, while we're talking about.
If you want, it comes after two items down the list.
Why don't I just play other rules and take the agenda in order?
Okay.
Let's go for the follow-up from the ransom memo and public presentation.
Uh.
What's a follow-up rule?
I don't know, I didn't like write anything out, but we did post that, and I'll fill it out about that, and the other, the board has been able to have a chance to review any of that, I heard any feedback from anyone else, Gabe was on there, Matt, and I think it was a little over 20 people in total, and another few that were on Facebook Live as it was being streamed, as we saw. Great content, lots, lots to understand and kind of decide going forward, and, you know, you see, if you remember the memo, you know, they did look at the, I think there's eight transects on Vine Haven, the FEMA had drawn and created the maps off of, I think another one, I think, was added when they looked at the Sands Co property for that property owner. So they gave us in the memo a kind of an overview of what they thought each transect needed to have done, and then the, we all started this looking at just Main Street, asked, and we asked them to put the memo together as a probable outcome, what they thought we would get, they chose to do the whole island and present it to us, and they gave a ballpark cost of, I think, 15 to 20 grand to look at Main Street, and between 70 and 100 grand, they estimated to be able to look at the whole island. There were some major errors in the, in the foundation of the formulas they were using, when they calculated, I think they said all of Maine, but particularly Pen Bay, and it just carried drought, Rockland maps were picked, they picked that up in the review, they hired ransom to do the review, but they didn't go back when they presented it, so FEMA, they didn't just make broad changes when they pointed it out, they relied on the towns or property owners to bring that forward. So that, I mean, I had really good feedback, really good questions, I remember from Gabe or Matt, is there anything else that you picked up on from that that I'm missing?
No, that sounds like a great comprehensive overview.
Yeah, the big question was, you know, really, what's next for the town, who, you know, how do we get this, how been, is the town gonna do the whole island, are they gonna just look at Main Street, and, you know, and that's for, you know, I just kind of said the last, we'll see through the budget process, right, and so it needs funding, and if that's something to be funded through the budget process, we'll see it come up this, throughout this review, if it's, if we need to find other ways to fund that, if the, if folks generally want to see a full island review, we gotta find a way to come up with somehow a hundred grand, whether it's a combination of public and private, or all public, or all private, and as a collective, put that forward, it makes a lot of sense to do the whole at once, instead of how a company do it in pieces, but it is a lot of money. They, I think they estimated like 300, 300 properties, I think, in it, so there's a lot of properties potentially impacted, there's no guarantee that any or all, I mean, pretty good idea, some will come out, but there's no guarantee which ones or how many, some could have increased flood zones, many might see a reduction, they won't know that until they get to that next level of review, really good for some of those.
So how do you recapture that money from property taxes, or is it just a hundred thousand dollars and people that own the property save money on their insurance?
Yeah, so for those that have to pay the premium for flood insurance, you know, they may see the reduction if, if the zone changes, if they end up out of a zone, obviously, they wouldn't have any, and there's no direct connection yet to the property values, the assessed values in the flood stuff, people are still buying properties, I mean, there's a challenge in who can buy them, how long will they be on the market because of it, you know, there's a lot of still things that are a little unknown, directly correlated to the flood insurance piece, but that is a piece that a lot of towns are wondering about, and were worried about down the road, it does affect who can buy, when it's in the flood zone, how, how you can buy it, if you need a mortgage, it's no question you need the flood insurance, if you pay cash, don't need it, and, you know, so you, you do get into that, you know, that discussion of, who, you know, how does this work? You know, what's the value for the town to be able to do this, or to consider doing this? Some, some have done it, I think Stonington was one that did it, a large part of their island, their community, Rockland obviously challenged the maps when it first came out, so there's definitely the ability to do it, it is about the, the ability of the property values to stay higher, if you're able to modify these zones at all, it's not a reason for them to be considered lower. Phil, what did you think of it when you went back?
I thought it was very interesting, very informative, and I've corresponded with Nate since then, once or twice, on a couple of questions I had, I don't recall what they are right now, but, yeah, I liked it, I enjoyed it.
Okay, let's go into, let's go into transfer station layout now.
So I've been asking them, engineers now, for, don't forget about the transfer station project, we, we know at a, at a minimum, we've got to address the retaining wall, and when it, that's, that's one of the biggest infrastructure pieces up there, so, given that we have to replace that, you know, the committee and staff, you know, asking the question of, well, do we reconsider the layout, this would be the time to do it, otherwise you're waiting until the wall needs to be replaced again, which would be quite a few years, and so if we want to try and increase the flow and, and try and make this so it's not everyone in and out of one entrance and exit, this was a concept they came up with. The other thing that we're, I, I'd like, I assume we're gonna try and reach here is putting things in alignment with the standards set out by the DEP for transfer stations, you know, having some contained areas for some of our, for our burn pile, for, for the metal, some of the other stuff, the hazardous waste is stored great in those trailers, you know, with the stuff down below in, in the fire, the burn pile in particular needs to be reduced in size, and it has, it's supposed to have containment around it, so the fire can't spread, and so that can be achieved through this process, you see that over on the right-hand side of the, of the design there. Those sizes need to be modified a little bit, I did mention that the, you know, if you go look at the metal pile today, the box they've got drawn there is certainly not gonna be big enough to encompass what's in there at any given time, I said at a minimum, it should probably be at least two dumpsters sizes worth, if not more, but they, they reassured us that, you know, that's just a concept there, and there's room continuing towards the shooting range there that we own up on top of that hill, that, that, that could be increased, no problem, but the flow, if you want to look at that, you know, the way they kind of conceptualize this, that they'd have the main entrance for the public to come in on that lower gate, towards the shooting range there, where we, right in front of the burn pile, and it looks as though you, you turn left immediately, and you'd be able to park and have the containers right there, they want, they propose lining all of the containers up, the demo, the trash, the recycling in a line there, it does make it a little easier to get the trucks in and out, to pick the trailers up, there'd be room for at least two containers there, as you can see for, for spares, usually we have one spare for solid weight, and he said it'd be great to have a second demo container up there, because that does fill up quick at times. Right now, we just don't have the space to really put one, or the, the ground to be able to move one around on, so this would be great in that sense, you know, the, the entrance and exit on the lower side there, behind the, the current building, where the single stream container is, they've used more for staff ingress and egress, or if a truck needs to go in through there to come in, that could still happen. Obviously, a big change in the way that traffic would flow through there, but hopefully, creating something that's, not, doesn't get as backed up, and risen as, I call it shotgun, right, if you got everyone coming in and out of one area, and it just can get really congested really quickly at times, so I don't know if this, what your reactions are or thoughts are on this, but feedback certainly for them to continue on this process, to try and get us a number for four towns meeting.
About, about, just driving 850,000 including contingency?
I mean.
Correct.
I can see one big problem with this already, that no one parks and logs their trash to the bin, they just back up to it.
Yeah, I was, I was going to suggest that, you know, right now, with that current layout, if all, one, two, three, four, six spots are filled at once, you know, trying to walk from the back of your truck around to where you dump all of your stuff, it's not.
Well, I just think that, why can't people just back up to it and dump it?
Which is gonna be a difficult task, if you have to back up on the hairpin.
Well, if you've got rid of those parking spaces and just had, right, and somewhere different, I guess, I don't know.
Or, or straight in it, straight in.
Maybe if they were over by the attendance building, if they just had like one bag they wanted to log across, and, I mean, sometimes people just have demo that they've all prepared for, they don't have all three things, so they just go to demo, and they might have trash, I mean, that's the only thing I can see is those.
I think we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have, obviously, we're gonna begin our budget process here, you know, in that couple of weeks.
Just off the top of my head, I can see that.
And, you know, I mean, right now, I, I'll admit, I haven't opened up my budget book yet, but if we're going to talk about wiping, wiping out reserve accounts, and potential, if we don't get grant money from Main Street, having to bond it out, I really hope that doesn't happen, but I think we're all in agreement that that's going to be number one concern, Main Street, we're talking about a proposed broadband project, we're talking about replacements in public works vehicles, and we're talking about, you know, money for now flood plain, and this, we're, we're gonna be talking, we're talking about a lot of money all at once here.
Really, the transfer station has to be, something has to be done, that's, it's falling apart, it's a mess, you know, we're gonna just have to prioritize after Main Street.
Well, absolutely, and that's what I'm saying, after Main, we're going, you know, we're, we're, right now, looking at a lot of projects, and they're good, you know, they're good projects, they had in there, it's just.
Right.
How much is it just to repair what's up there?
I didn't get the sense when the structural engineer looked at the wall five, four, five years ago now, that there was an option to like repair it, to a full replacement, that those.
That would be helpful to know what, just the full replacement of what, what's up there is.
Right, just, just replacing the retaining wall, and, and it's gonna need to be paved as well, like, you know, there's hardly any asphalt left right now.
Right, but I mean, just doing the, what's the cost of doing the bare minimum versus the cost of changing it, I mean, I think that would be helpful for people to know.
I can see if they can get that for us, I mean, it's.
I mean, it doesn't have to be like, rate to the, every, every screw that's going in there, but I mean, they should have a good idea if it's gonna cost half as much money, or.
I, I continue to be impressed with the concepts that Wooden Incurn presents to us for consideration, but just talking, talked about a lot of money over the last few meetings, that's all.
We can get this to the Waste Watcher group, I don't, I can't remember if I've shared it with them already or not.
Well, I mean, yeah, I, I would, if we have that, that committee, then excellent, for the last couple of years.
And I know I haven't gotten to the staff yet, so I'll get it over to them tomorrow to look at as well, and get some input on that.
Yeah, I mean, the Waste Watchers committee could, yeah, they absolutely should have time to look at this.
So it sounds like for you, the layout would be second priority, you know, cost being the first one, is that right, and then?
Well, I mean, my, my main concern is looking at 850,000 dollar price tag, that is, that is a concern for me, yes.
Be nice to know, just like.
How much extra?
Oh, yeah, I mean.
I, I don't know, I mean, I, I'm, I think you bring up a great point, Jake, like, what is, if we just replace the retaining wall and pave it, what would that cost? You know, I, I think that's, I think that's a reasonable, I think that's a reasonable question, and then after that, what, you know, what can we do after that?
It'd be a lot easier for people to stomach if it costs a similar, you know.
Right, yeah, if you're not, if you end up not talking about much more money anyway, then yeah. Because everybody, everybody agrees that the current layout is disastrous, it's, you know, it makes you, makes you, makes you want to pull your hair out if it's visiting.
Okay.
All right, let's go on to new business, charter communications, cable franchise agreement.
This is a draft, pretty close to what the state model is, I do still have outstanding questions from them about the service area, which is section six. Service availability. They did lower, it's, I think there was a court case last year, or something that changed in the statute, that we work 20 residences per linear strand mile or aerial mile, and it's down to 15 in this proposal, with the speculation that it could go back up, and there were some other things in there that I wanted clarification on, is the service, you know, mainly is the service area, what is, what do they define as the service area? You know, we know the fiber runs from the Thoroughfare down to Iowa Hill Mountain, they have their, you know, their, their housing, and then from there, it goes out, but there's no service drops, I don't believe, from the Thoroughfare to Iowa Hill Mountain, and, you know, so it's, you know, is the service area, the area beyond that, or can it be included anywhere before that, so I'm still waiting on that one as a major one, but other than that, let you see what this looks like. Other, there's other, other questions that you have about it now, or between the next meeting, let me know, continue to try and track, hear back from them, and report back on that, but.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah, all the little part, but I'm assuming it's, it's every year we sign this, correct?
No, so, it was, it was 10, I think, at one point, they proposed it to be 15, you know.
I feel like we just had one of these, but it might have been with a.
If this one's proposed for 15 years.
I know that in my. I know that in my, in the last year until we had a franchise agreement.
It came up for renewal.
Okay.
It was on the desk to be dealt with and then last winter and then COVID.
Okay.
Got to vary. So we revisited it a lot. There's some laws and big things that changed over the summer. Um, the other thing we don't have, um, that some towns do, I don't know if you wanna consider it at all, um, is an ordinance, cable franchise or a, a model one that I provided is a cable television rate, regulation ordinance. Um, there's a couple of examples out there and I did include a, um, section of the state statute that, uh, talks about those ordinance being created. I don't know, but it's totally fair to have it, just acknowledging that we don't have one, we can have one if you want one. I'll lay out all that for the agreement.
Basically, they can't, they have to cap it to certain amount or.
Right, the, um, the franchise fee, that's a fee that's passed on to the, the customers of theirs that then comes back to us. It'd be, I think, up to five percent of their revenue generated from the cable portion of the business.
Right.
So we can make five, five percent or whatever they make, it'll be awesome.
Yeah, which, I think in the past few years, it's been about four grand at one percent. It just goes to the general operating.
Yeah. We, we can get a little something, we can get more at home.
We do get service at the, um, fire station. For nothing from them for the cable service. Um, that's the only building I think that we have cable service in, in that building. They put that in, I don't know how many years ago. Some towns, you know, some towns run these cable franchises and what they get out of is, is a local cable network and a system in a channel, peg channel out of it.
Get community access.
Right. And so then the community buildings, a lot of times will be hooked in with the cable service and whatnot. Obviously, it's a little, for me, it's a little confusing because the cable and the internet are delivered over the same line, so it's, you know, that separation. I think that's where a lot of this stuff has come up in the last few years, with the statutes and F C C issues.
Okay, I'll listen to our budget schedule review. Here we go again, didn't actually check yesterday.
So the budget committee met, I had them meet, um, they did meet this afternoon, um, just to try and get the, uh, wrap our heads around the schedule. Um, I did get the books out about three weeks later than I anticipated. Um, so we did work through a tentative or proposed schedule to try and do some joint meetings with the select board if interested. Um, the thought was that there'd be presentations, um, overview of the budget proposed by the departments, um, and kind of leave it at that, go over the goals and go over what's being presented as budgets. Um, get through those presentations, then they'd get, then they'd be able to do their workshops after those are all done. Um, and kind of get down in the weeds on stuff. Um, so we proposed three, three-hour, um, workshops to consider. I don't know if that, um, what your thoughts are on that, but one of them is being proposed for next Monday. Um, another one for, for Wednesday, the tenth, and then the third one for the sixteenth, which should be a Tuesday.
I won't be here that day.
So the thought was to do those from four to seven. Those days worked for all, all the folks that were on the call today. Uh, I don't know if your thoughts are, what your thoughts are on.
Both on Monday and Wednesday next week, have a three-hour meeting?
Yep.
What's the date again?
Eighth, the tenth, and the sixteenth is what works for them.
I, I won't be here on the sixteenth.
I mean, yeah, that, that works, so it's a.
What time do they start?
Four o'clock. And really, and really four fifteen would be better for me, because I get a little work at four. Four fifteen would be much preferable if that's acceptable time.
That would give.
I'm not here to can't call the meeting order anyway.
If that, if, if, if those three dates work to kind of kick off and do the presentations, that would leave about three weeks to go through and really go through with detail for them, um, to go through any questions or, you know, what they want to work through. Um, and still give us, you know, if we push to the last week of April, they have the warrant set.
Oh, speaking of which, if we, if we don't know about potential grant money for Main Street until May, is it, are we going to be able to have a warrant set by April, not knowing whether or not we're going to need to seek bonding versus just having a grant on it?
I mean, I would assume so. I mean, you've got, unless you want to move your town meeting day into July.
Well.
Um, and I'd assume that you'd want to start in June, because you don't, you don't want to start your budget year without a, an improved budget.
I did it last year.
Well, the, and the mandates or the executive orders allowed us to, to, to continue using the previous year's numbers. It's not generally the rule.
I mean, we're not, we're, we're gonna, we're not gonna know a major piece in April.
We may not, um, but having a, you know, we need to have a special town meeting to, to consider that, you can always do that too.
Or we could even have a separate article. We put an article for a bond. And then just tell everybody the vote, know what town meeting, and pray to God to listen to us. But, you know, seriously, you could do that. Okay, never mind, I withdraw, I withdraw all my concern. It just, I woke up the other night thinking about this the other night.
I mean, it's something that we've been working on for quite a few years and it is trying to connect all those pieces in, in the timeframe, you know, it doesn't always line up perfectly, but, you know, we still, you know, there's gonna be other pieces. I mean, it's still gonna be another grant we're gonna try and go after. Um, you know, and if bond, if, if weren't articles for bonds, usually they say not to exceed amounts of, you know, we're too confident if we get some pieces. Um, you know, there's a long, a lot of steps in between now and when we're gonna be able to secure the funding, so.
Sorry, Gabe, but now, I'm not, I'm sorry, Gabe has been raising her hands like crazy for the last couple of minutes trying to get my attention, I think, and I haven't found on her. Gabe, do you have something?
I don't.
Oh, you're just right.
Sorry if I, maybe I, I didn't realize I was raising my hand.
You looked like you were waving frantically at me.
Are these, um, budget meetings gonna be on, um, or?
They'll have to be a hybrid, um, you know, still, you know, there were, um, one, one budget committee member came in today and we got the, the person taking notes was also here, so it was just three of us in the room. But they've got five or six members in that committee, um, so we'll definitely offer the hybrid option.
Well, if worse comes to worse, you know, if we have people on that committee that don't have excellent internet or don't feel comfortable with the technology, you know, I can stay home and facilitate from my couch if need be. I don't, you know, if somebody wants to be in person, that's up to, then, no, just let, just throw it out to them.
And if, and if we need to, we can split the rooms.
Okay.
We can have the room upstairs hooked up to the system as well and run one off the meeting all, the other one off the Zoom if we need to.
Yep.
So we can, we can work with that. Um, I know it'll be a little challenging to have the, I know it could be hard and with the budget book, we're used to flipping through pages and not being able to see everyone. It definitely takes away from that, but we'll do the best we can and, you know, using that single PDF, I'll be able to go through those things, have them on the screen if you want. But those work, at least for those next, next two weeks, we can weigh that out. Phil, those work for you?
Yeah, they're all right. The four to seven, you said, right?
Yeah, I know it's a lot, a long meeting and, you know, we can put some breaks in there to get, you know, you can step away. If you are home, you can step away and get some quick heat or something.
Yes.
But we'll, we'll, we'll see how the first one goes on the eighth and plan for the tenth and then we can kind of regroup between the two.
Three hours is, it's a chunky time. Yeah, it might, it might not even be, it might even be three hours each time.
I'll send out, um, tomorrow, I told them I was sending out depending on how you guys felt about to send out the proposed topics to discuss and the items to discuss at each one of those meetings. We'll go from there.
Okay. Restricting vehicle weights, approve road posting, that time of year. So do we have to list out each road individually in a motion?
Um, no, I think what you can do, um, this is our current ordinance right now. Um, so the municipal officers, um, have the exclusive power, um, to authorize the closures, or you can, um, I believe it says you can, um, assign that responsibility to, hopefully get the right one.
We could essentially delegate the responsibility to the road commissioner and deputy road commissioner.
Right. So usually you do that, um, usually it's something that Dan and I do, um, we do want to post them. I mean, the exception of the last two days here coming up really cold and freezing again, and it was, it's definitely time to.
It's going to, next week is when it'll warm up, it looks like.
Yeah, yeah, we had run into a few last week, I think in some spots, um, some of the gravel roads are still a little frozen or ice covered, but some of the other ones, you can start to see the frosts and other places with the pavement breaking up again on the paved roads, so, um, if you want to do that, we can take it as needed.
I move that we authorize the road commissioner and deputy road commissioner to post roads for weight restrictions.
Okay.
Seconded by Cam Allen in the discussion. All those are favorable.
Aye.
Okay, FOA records retention, review, quote, and possible.
Uh, it's one of those, I mean, I think most folks know the freedom of access laws, um, you know, retaining records, um, being the emphasis here. And so if someone were to want to request a record, you know, it's, it's, it's something that's been presented before, it's a report, it's a document, it's an email, something like that. You know, it's our obligation to have kept those and be able to provide those back to them. Same thing applies to social media, um, the posts, the things we put up on, on Facebook or on Instagram. Um, we don't utilize Twitter, but, you know, some do. Um, you know, we're responsible to, to make sure that we've got a record kept of all those posts, all the comments on all those posts. Um, you know, there's even the instances where the comment on the comments on those posts need to be captured, but sometimes can be deleted. When those disappear, there's no record of them. Um, sometimes those social media accounts clear, clear cache on your page, you know, for, for data purposes, they need to, you know, remove some of that. And if you haven't saved it, you can't produce it anymore. It was your obligation to store that after that and be able to provide that in future, um, if needed. Um, so this is a company that acknowledges this, they offer a service to be able to, um, in one place, pull all those, um, social media sources in, into their end. Um, I believe that they capture that every, I think it was like ten or fifteen seconds, so it's very, um, low, unlikely that you'll lose, um, something like that. It becomes a searchable database of all those records. You can search by keywords or by person, um, you know, be able to provide those, those, um, requests for access information really quickly. Um, right now, if we wanted to do that, we're gonna, we'd have to basically go through and screenshot um, all of our pages and all those comments and somehow store those just in, just in computer, you know, folders. Um, we'll print them out and, and put those in regular files somewhere. Um, it's something that I don't think, um, you know, folks that, you know, like M M A, for example, or that we're hearing enough about at our conferences that I go to, um, FOA certainly, but not specific to these social media pieces. We have the same thing for video. All of our videos, I mean, we have them saved in multiple places. Um, you know, that's, that's not something that they would capture here unless it was part of a post on like a Facebook or Instagram. So they're, uh, you know, they're very upfront with their fees.
Bottom line, let's get to the bottom line.
Their fees for, for the year is three thousand bucks for twenty-nine eighty-eight for the year. It's a monthly service based on how many records or how many accounts we have. Um, they could prorate the first year based on the remainder of this fiscal year for us.
How much did you say again?
Three, uh, just under three thousand dollars for the year.
Yeah, I, and you brought this to us. Yeah, that's something, I believe. I mean, I think, I think our Facebook page is great for providing information, but this is, oh, that's a.
And you just block the comments, so you don't have to save, you can't block comments on Facebook, or delete it.
Yeah, I would say, I'd rather delete the account if I.
You can't delete it, because you gotta save those records. But the very least, we've gotta go back through and just save everything that's there now, and I don't ima, I don't know, you know, what your thought, I mean, how we communicate, we've been doing it that way, right? And this is one of these things that cart before the horse probably, and every town's in the same boat, not many towns. Only one other town they offered to me that's using the service at the moment. I think a lot of towns just aren't doing it. Um, and they've, they've shared some examples in other parts of the state or country where if you can't provide the record, it's it, uh, they got you. Um, you gotta be able to provide it, um, once it's been created. You know, so even, you know, that's something we asked them, well, we can just, we'll just have to, what if we just deleted this? Well, you still gotta capture what's been created and provide that if a request comes in for it.
Why not, in that case, use enough, you know, as much as I don't like to spend a thousand dollars, use it for the six months that we have for the next, not six months, uh, whatever.
Three months.
Three months, use it, capture everything that we have right now, delete the Facebook account as soon as we, they, you know, as soon as we have signed the agreement, and then just.
I'm sure they won't, I'm sure they won't be part of it, will they?
Like, and then get out of it, yeah, that's, you know, shame on whichever lawyer managed to swindle towns like this, but no, I can't, I can't picture spending three thousand dollars a year on backing up Facebook information.
Three thousand dollars this year.
Right, yeah, right. And then once they have you.
It's gonna go up.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, I, no, this is great day, you know, fear mongering, swindling.
We should be talking to the M M A, they should be talking to the legislature vote about changing, I mean, is it, is it a main free movement facing or is it a federal? Any record created by our entity is required, you know, we have to be able to produce that record, you know, if it's requested.
I think we should. I think we should, you know, say that, you know, let's try to.
How can you not, how, I don't know, I've never been on Facebook, I've just said, I mean, how can you not block comments?
But you, you.
You can't just, you can't just, you can't just use it for like.
It's a legal, it's a legal aspect, uh, the, the town of Iona Avenue, being a municipality cannot. Just like Donald Trump in twenty seventeen tried to block.
But what, what do we post on Facebook? I've never, I don't know, I'm not.
It is very, very, you know, this road is closed or, uh.
All the COVID updates.
Yeah, COVID updates.
Meetings are.
Yeah, meeting, yeah, meeting announcements, uh, we should, we're sharing this meeting on Facebook right now.
We've really expanded its juice in the last two years, um, just to be able to net, you know, outreach, you know, and offer the information to the public. I mean, the wind is not the only place people, it's, it's a slow way of offering information. The website in of itself, um, you know, people can sign up for E, E news and E blast, but, you know, that in of itself is also not the way people are generally looking for information, is through email. And so we use a multitude of things, and I don't know if Gabe, you know, this is, this is what Gabe, you know, and part of what Gabe does, I don't know. She wasn't on the meeting too, and I don't know if you have anything to add to it, Gabe, but, you know, it's, it's been a lot to be able to connect with people and offer access to information and resources and, you know.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know, it's, it's such a tricky, um, it's such a tricky thing, and I think, you know, both Andy and I are just, it, it's, it's disheartening, but, you know, the law is the law and, um, we do need to abide by the law. The question for me is just in general for the select board of just the value of outreach and the value of being able to provide timely information targeted in the way that our community receives information. And I think there is a gr, that there's a huge number of people in our community that use Facebook as their primary medium for receiving, um, and sharing information, and that's why we use Facebook, not because we, we love Facebook. Um, you know, there's a smaller population that uses Instagram, those are the only, currently the only two social media platforms that we use. But, you know, there, there's a reason why we use it and, and like Andy said, there's, you know, we can, we can ask people to come to our website to get the information. It, it's really just dependent on the goal of the select board, like, is a goal to enhance outreach and engagement? And if so, part of that is using the tools that your community, uh, utilizes to access information and making it easier for people to see information, um, be able to, yeah, access and share that information. So it kind of comes down to that, and if the goal is to increase outreach and engagement, um, then you make a commitment to using the tools and then, you know, obviously if we use the tools, we have to abide by the law. This is a service that enables us to easily abide by the law. So it's not, I mean, none of it is exciting or pretty in any way whatsoever. But I would consider the outreach and engagement question more than I would say the focus on the money, sort of the value of outreach and engagement and the value of. Say the focus on the money, sort of the value of outreach and engagement and the value of, um, enabling the community to easily see, access and engage with information.
Can, uh, can you give me an example, Gabe or Andy, of, uh, how we would find ourselves liable? If we didn't take advantage of this?
Sure, so I'll just give an example generally of what, you know, they had shared, uh, another client of theirs, um, I guess before they were a client of theirs, um. They, you know, someone, you know, town creates a post, um, someone might comment on that post, uh, maybe they choose to delete it, you know, maybe it's an older post that, you know, the, the platform deletes, uh, for whatever reason. Uh, but then someone knows that, hey, the town posted that thing, and then there was that one, there was those comments there that the town, you know, didn't, you know, reacted to, or someone else reacted to. You know, and can you provide me that record, it's like an email, right, so in a sense, hey, I want, I want every course responded you had about X or with whom. I mean, you've gotta be able to provide that record, um, you know, to whoever's asking, um, and, and this is where if you can't provide that, but you can prove it was there once and not there now. Um, towns have found themselves at a need for this service. How much? How much of the towns get fined for some posts that some other idiot makes? It depends on.
I mean, you guys aren't the ones causing the controversy, you guys are just saying, this is the, this is what's happening, right, isn't that, is that how the town Facebook works? I mean, when someone responds like, oh, you guys are a bunch of idiots, you don't go back on there and say, no, you're the idiot, like most people around town, do you?
No, we use it as an engagement, but it doesn't stop others from commenting on our forum, it's like someone coming into a town meeting, you have the ability to, you know, the pleasure of the board, be able to speak your mind and, and share your comments. Um, that's why we take minutes, um, at those meetings, so, I mean, the examples they use range from tens to hundreds, thousands. Even at the lower end, three thousand dollars a year, you can go ten years in some cases before you hit, you hit what some of these towns have paid.
Oh my god, I'm still inclined to.
What is, what is, uh, the state of Maine, they, I don't know. What are the archives out there, they probably have someone that they pay a hundred thousand dollars a year on staff that archive shit, huh? Yeah, I can ask, I don't know. I mean, every.
There's, there's, there's gonna be a lot of different, there'll be a lot of different organizations.
Well, yeah, I mean, they've got, they've got pages for any, you know, fortunately, we don't really have any committee or, or department pages, but that'd be another one, and it, it doesn't really go up that much unless you've got a lot of activity, it's all based on how much activity you have. You know, but a place like the state of Maine where they've got one for DMR and DOT and, you know, Secretary of State, I mean, they've got, almost every agency probably has one now, um, you know, so they're, they've gotta archive all of that. We archive our emails, you know, it's built into the price of an email account, um, accounts you have are all backed up and all that's back, you know, stored on the GoDaddy servers. Um, so we'd be able to go back and grab any of those if needed. That one, is there, is there a way to weekly screen down the Facebook thing into an email and just save it on that, someone in the office?
Sometimes, uh, sometimes things get deleted in shorter times than a week, there are times that you can try to look out, you know, it's not with the town, I don't even, I'll, I'll try to find the post, and it's, you can't find it all of a sudden. Like, it's vanished.
I know, one, one thing we, we probably won't be doing anymore is, you know, they even said if, if we promote and share something to another page, the comments, I think on that one, if I remember that right, Gabe. Uh, because we've shared that, that's our communication out, so that's one thing that will not be, you know, someone wants to share something on our behalf, fine, if we do it, that's where it changes, you know, again, if Gabe and I sat through it, we were as frustrated as you guys are.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it, it, you know, again, in some ways, cart before the horse on some of the stuff, you know, we were all interested in every town, and reaching out to constituents, sharing information, that's what we're supposed to be doing. You know, just like with emails, this is one of those things that you've gotta be able to provide, this is the record we've created, the report.
So Andy, what's your recommendation?
Well, I'd, I'd say, I'd say we sign up for the service, but, you know, obviously upset about the fact that it is what it is and costs what it costs, but. You know, after we saw what we, you know, were presented by them and hearing some of those examples in other places, at the amount of money they were looking at. You know, it's a small insurance policy, basically, we have high insurance costs in other parts, and if you think of it as an insurance, for, to be able to respond to these requests, um.
I move, we, uh, I move we go ahead.
Is there a sec, uh, is there a second to that motion? I'm gonna give it just a couple of seconds here, you guys, uh, I just don't.
I'll second, no, we can discuss.
Okay, there's, okay, the motion has now been moved to second, Gabe, you had your hand up, you.
Yeah, I guess I just, I would just bring it back to, you know, and maybe this will take a little, like, maybe it's not something that can be decided right at the moment, but. Just for the select board to really think about, again, just like the, what is the value to the community of being able to access information in a, in a very, like, you know, timely way through Facebook? And, uh, you know, I, I think there's great value in that, because I, I think a lot of people use it, not everyone does, but that's not our only outreach channel, obviously. Um, but I would just try to, you know, think about that, and is it, is it worth the money to, to have the community be able to. See the town presence, access the information, you know, we, we are able to put out messages that, that people see and share, uh, pretty widely, once, once they're out there, and we can do that within. You know, seconds, really, so, you know, obviously, there's other channels, um, like through the website, and like Andy said, there's, there's, there's the, people can subscribe to things. But that, that, again, is a limited, um, number of people, but I'm not trying to promote one way or the other, I'm just saying, like, if we're gonna use, um, social media, which I think there's great value in doing. This is the cost of it, um, and if we're not gonna use it, we would still probably need to pay for some level of service for, at least until we back everything up, and then be able to delete the accounts. Um, so either way, we'd probably have to pay some, we would have to pay something, um, I just think, like, what is the value, or what do you guys feel the value is of our community being able to. Easily access information in a way that a lot of people here do.
Well, I feel like people, uh, we, before we started using Facebook, our outreach was never that poor anyway, it obviously could be improved before Facebook, but. We still got our message out, people, and people knew what was going on around town, it's a small town, and people talk. Um, so, Phil, is your motion to? Where to put it? Is your motion?
Enter into that agreement, and the reason is.
Is it to enter in for an agreement just for the current fiscal year or also for the renewal on July one twenty-one?
Well, does this agreement, I haven't looked at it, does this agreement, uh, provide the same annual fee for years in the future?
No, this is just for the next, the agreement is not to exceed nine hundred ninety-six dollars for service dates of March one twenty-one through June thirtieth twenty-one. And then two thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars for the annual renewal on July one twenty-one. So if you would clarify your motion to whether or not you want to pay for the service from March one through June thirtieth. And that's it, or if you would like to also subscribe for the next fiscal year?
I would move that we subscribe for the next fiscal year.
I was, I didn't, I didn't hear him.
He said he, he would like it to go to the next fiscal year.
To the next or through the next?
Yes, through the next.
Through the next fiscal year, okay.
Yes.
And that's the motion you would like to second as well?
I would like to know.
Just a second, just a second, is that the same motion you would like to second, Pam?
Um, yes, I'll second that.
Okay, I just wanna make, I'll make sure we're all on the same page here.
So we can discuss more.
What happens if after a year, we decide that we don't wanna do it, what happens to all of the archives? Do we get, uh, a digital download of those so that we have them on our servers, or is that something that, after they, you know?
Pay more money for.
Right, like, we're, we're paying them to archive everything, is that something that they're gonna give us a copy of so that if we decide, I mean, I'm assuming that there's more than one company that does this, correct?
Um, there may be, I don't.
But, no, no, I'm just saying, like, so say in the future, we, someone comes to us and says, well, we can do it for twenty-five hundred dollars, and we wanna switch to them, what happens with that, with that information that this archive social has?
Yeah, you can download essentially any, at any time, you can download a database, so you can download it, I think, as a CSV file or as a PDF file. You can, you know, you can download everything, you can specify, you know, if there's a request, you can specify just what the, you know, for what the request was, a date range, so. You can access the archive essentially at any time and download it.
Okay, any more discussion? Pam is taking a deep breath.
Well, I was gonna say something. Uh, I was just wondering that when that comes up for renewal, we'll have much more information, I am assuming on what it's all, what the contract will look like and.
There's the monthly subscribe, the monthly subscription fee, um, based on the number of, um, posts that are, they're, they're trying to catalog for us, and so our rate falls, I believe it was six hundred bucks a month, I believe. Um, but they're about where we fall, with one lower and one higher. I, I think it's just, can I amend Phil's motion to just pay for it from March first of this year until June thirtieth?
Only, only if he withdraws his motion or admits his motion. You can, you can.
I'd just like to see what we're gonna get for this money before we lock into a three thousand dollars again.
I'm okay with that, I'll amend my motion to accommodate Jake's proposal.
I'll second the amended motion.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Uh, that, that's more palatable to me as well, in that way, at the end, I, that way on June thirty, we could also.
I need to learn a little bit more of, of, I mean, I think, yeah, the, the, I see the packet, I'll look it over, I, I kinda skimmed through my thing, but.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, I will call for a vote, all those in favor of a motion to subscribe to this service. Effective March one through June thirtieth of the current calendar year. All those in favor?
Aye.
And none opposed. Okay. I feel like, wow, I feel like we just got.
I feel, I feel like we. That we have anyway.
I feel like we just broke down in the desert and the repairman asked us, how much money do we have, fix it?
Wow, yeah.
All right, report from town manager.
Yeah, the legislative update, we covered the capital projects and just did the social media, I'll just get the legislative updates quickly, um. I included the bulletin in your, in your report, or your packet, um, it comes out from MMA, if you don't see it already, they did provide, uh, an overview of executive orders twenty-seven, twenty-seven A, the emergency municipal spending and budget authority. Um, a lot of it was just continuation from what was previously done, um, as, again, quite a few towns still go through town meeting and the budget runs on calendar year, so. Some towns are running into the same questions we did last, last spring, summer, um, so for right now, a lot of that stuff is continuing. Uh, the big one, um, on legislative fronts, there was two bills that, you know, were, you know, meant to be pretty minimal, or, well, you know, not very invasive, um, and. As someone said, they went sideways at the transportation committee, uh, a bill for Matinekis' ferry service to, um, to exceed the thirty-six trips a year cap that's in, in the legislature. And for French Beryl service to be provided, that it be, instead of may be provided, that it shall be provided, they ran into an issue this year where, uh, the ferry service, the DOT was actually considering. Not paying for the, um, the private boat service that serves their islands, because they only get, I think, two trips a week or something like that, from the ferry boat, and that's supplemented by a private boat. Um, so there was actually consideration, I believe, for that service not to be funded the remainder of this fiscal year, um, so that, you know, kinda struck that, um, hey, we've been getting the service for forty, fifty years. Let's just call it what it is, it's a shell instead of a may, um, to at least maintain that level of service, um, seemed pretty benign, they went into, into the committee, uh, the commissioner raised, um, questions, they're not questions, but. The suggestion that perhaps the whole ferry service operation funding mech, you know, structure be reviewed and, and looked at, um, so those were voted by the committee not, ought not to pass. Um, with a letter explaining this, this review process, um, of which, that's about all we know at the moment, um, so I think there's an advisory board meeting coming up this month, um. And hopefully, there'll be a little bit more on that from that, not intended to be a very quick turnaround, it's something that, um, they acknowledge would be a working group created, um, I know it sounds like there's already at least one member of the advisory board that'll be on that. Um, group, and Representative McDonald will also be on that group, at the very least, um, we don't know how many people or what the meetings are or anything like that, but. Uh, this was something that, um, I think was foreshadowed a couple of years ago with the rate change discussion, when we were in Belfast, the commissioner joined those during the middle of all of that rate change. Um, and one of those hearings did acknowledge, um, that he planned to review the, the rate, the fee structures and, or, um, the cost share. How much came from fares, how much came from the state, um, the challenge I think they're seeing is there's been in the last few years, they've exceeded the budget because of repairs or because revenue was down, and the money had to come from the state. And the state statute says, uh, they shall not, um, contribute more than fifty percent, and the fares must generate at least fifty percent. You know, so in some cases in the past few years, they've contributed more than fifty, um, from the state budget, um, and so I think the question is, what happens when that fifty percent's not met at the fare box? Uh, I think that's what he was getting at in Belfast, um, you know, what that looks like in terms of who contributes, how much, that's the big question. Um, obviously, the concern is that the rate, the fare, the, um, the funding stay fifty-fifty, but the way it's written in statute, it's not obligated to be fifty-fifty, so that'd be one of the concerns going into all this, is are they looking to modify that or. Try and find an answer to what happens when, when it's not fifty percent generated by fare box.
Well, there's no way it's gonna be fifty percent in the last year, you know, the last year's gonna be devastating for.
It's not far off because of the COVID funds they got, they did get quite a bit of money from the COVID relief.
Well, I, I didn't realize they got that, I was just gonna say, like, if they're gonna go by this year, it's gonna be.
Yeah.
We're gonna get to it, but.
Well, the year before, don't forget, there were major fare changes in the last couple of years, so there was a significant decrease in ridership, either because, directly because of that, or just coincidentally because of that. Yes, although, if they, if they're, depending on the timeframe they look at, it, it looks potentially worse than it may be looking ahead, um, this past year is definitely not a baseline they should be using, but. So, the next.
This year probably shouldn't be either, I mean, because I don't think they, I mean, who knows what's gonna happen this summer, but. They should at least wait until next year.
Phil, is there, is there, you remember when the next advisory board meeting is?
The eleventh.
Eleven, so next week, um, and those are virtual, if anyone wants to be able to, to join, to listen in on those. The other, um, that's a big one there, the recycling rates, so the, I include EcoMaine, Daniel report, um, Rhino Haven, as I, as I pulled out and noted, we were one of the, um, higher per capita recycling rates, um, as a customer there. Um, only a couple, a couple communities a little bit smaller than us were higher, um, that's great to see when you compare it to some of the other communities. Scroll down.
What's tri-county, tri-count, do you know?
Uh, I don't. Um, shellfish management areas, that, um, I've been mentioning that over the last couple of years, um. DMR presented or printed, published, or intends to publish this map for the shellfish management areas, um, the big changes are through the thoroughfare, some of that was restricted and now will be prohibited. Um, in, in Perry's Creek, um, a lot of that's now becoming restricted, um. So where it's just, that's open, I can't see the. Yeah, the, the open water, open walk, where there isn't the hash marks or the coloring, um, it's just, you know, open. Um, all of this is general, all of this is because of test scores, they got the color coding in Legend there, um, anything over, I think, orange, black or red, I believe, is. You know, where they start closing and restricting or, or closing things, um, and this is something that's, for some reason, been trending in worse direction. Um, and this is something that's for some reason been trending in worse directions. Um, it's hard to really understand being as far out with the tile changes we have, um, but it's, it looks as bad as it does. Um, last spring, I started out trying to work on a grant that, you know, we might be able to get grant funding for to do some testing. Um, the DNA testing is probably one of the best things we can try and get, get funded to do because we could try to pinpoint exactly where, you know, the coli, the bacteria, what is coming from a particular animal? Can we kinda narrow down what might be causing this? You know, in the past, we just automatically assumed it was overboard discharge. Um, Yala went through a pretty extensive review, I think about ten, fifteen years ago or so, over the last ten or fifteen years. And a lot of those have been, as far as we know, terminated or corrected. Um, there's some that remain, but they're licensed and they're treated before they go overboard, um, so they wouldn't be causing this issue. Um, you know, when we asked them what, if it's not human, what could it be? Um, anything from dogs to, to raccoons in some places they've seen or, or beavers in a, in a water body and that water discharges in the ocean could cause it, seals, migrating birds. Um, I feel the possibility of potentially houseboats, you know, people are spending, you know, time, they're coming out, so, you know, when they test matters. Um, so these tests reflect usually like May through September, uh, maybe in October, depending on the weather. They usually only do in six samples a year, they're coming out six times a year. There's about ten, twenty test sites out on Rhino Haven that they're collecting from. Um, you know, so the other conversation was, can we get some volunteers to test more often? You know, can we get the other six months of the year? Perhaps if it's human related, it'll show better numbers the other six months and that'll help, um, see something, a trend there. Um, in order for these to be reclassified in the positive direction, they need thirty consecutive tests with positive numbers, numbers that aren't, aren't concerning. Um, so that's, um, if you do six, only six a year, you need, you know, it'd be five years of positive scores. Um, you know, there is a way to expedite that and do that more frequently if, if we have the commitment and volunteers or staff to be able to do that. Um, but the scores need to be trending in the right direction.
I thought the, um, school was gonna try to have students do some of the testing.
Um, not the, I'm no, yet.
Oh, I thought that we'd talked about.
We, we talked about the fact that when we were in high school, they used to do it.
I mean.
Bob Watts and KK.
But they said, I thought the hurricane people said they were gonna do some more testing, they're just doing that, do those two sites on hurricane.
Yeah, so they did it around hurricane, hurricane on expedited basis and they were able to get those opened up, I think, in less than two years cause they were able to collect so, so frequent.
How often can you submit a sample, is it weekly, bi-weekly?
I didn't ask how, what the minimum time between, uh, uh.
I'm assuming you can't find out when you get a good test and just do thirty days in a row.
Ah, yeah, right.
It's a good question, I can follow up and ask what that looks like. I mean, a lot of places, we don't have a, um, shellfish program, there's no, no shellfish warden. On most places, we're one of the few towns along the coast that don't. Um, we don't have to have one, um, if you do, um, you know, if there's a concern, you know, from the clamming, you know, the economic perspective of this. If we did have a program, we could issue the permits, we could, you know, there are, from what I understand, a lot of people that sell clams commercially that aren't from here, um, they're harvesting them, they're taking them back. Um, you know, that's something that through a program that could be, we could create that, you know, you can, you know, kinda decide, you know, who, you know, how many licenses go out to, say, residents and non-residents, you have to have an opportunity for both, but you can kinda regulate that, um, through that program. Um, the other, again, that's one aspect of it, the other is getting some of these open again presumably. Um, you know, I've talked with Rick a little bit on North Haven, obviously it's a big thing for them too. Um, you know, just, question, a lot of questions, we just can't fathom why it is the way it is, but.
Well, this must have some bang on some of the aquaculture people too, doesn't it?
It does, um, so this is, um, from what I understand, less about the science, more about the perception. Um, it's very unlikely from what I understand, like for kelp to say be impacted by these closed areas or the coli in these areas, it's not impossible. Uh, but it is, from what I understand, more about the perception. Hey, you're harvesting from a closed area, well, you know, what's going on? I was talking to someone earlier today, I said it kinda reminded me of the issue in, you know, the contaminants and mercury coming out of, um, the north part of Pen Bay from the rivers there, up near Steersport. Um, there was some concern years ago about that, what's that mean for the lobsters? Well, you know, it's more about the perception of it, and it's not knowing. And so that is a challenge for those getting into aquaculture to try and face this when it goes to market and whoever's buying it. Um, again, as an island, you'd think that'd be the least of our worries of the close departments, so. So the, the department's very willing to work with us, it's a matter of us coming up with the solution, you know, the volunteers, the funding to be able to do it, whatever. Um, you know, so it's something that we'll continue to try and figure out the way to, a way to do it. You know, we did ask the question, I haven't heard back yet, um, the people involved in the testing can also be in the aquaculture venture. Um, especially, and I said, does that, can they, can they not test from these test sites because their ventures near that test site? Or can they just not be involved at all? Is it the person on the application or the person in the business? Cause some of those have many, you know, the one that has a lot of people involved and that's probably where you're gonna get the most interest. Um, you know, so we're still trying to figure that out with them. I'll ask about the frequency of the tests, um, to the period in between tests. Uh, but we'll go forward from there.
What's involved in the testing?
Just dip a little thing in, in the water and.
Same as a water sample?
Pretty much. There's a timing, there's a timing and they, you know, so what DMR will do is there's a certification process, there's an online part that you, you read and do an online portion before they come out and meet with you. And then when the field folks come out, they basically just wanna see that you know how to handle it. Um, but then it's just a matter of being able to time it up with them to pick it up in Rockland or wherever, you gotta meet them. You know, so involve those trips over there, um, we're coordinating with someone who already is, um, to get that to it, cause it has to fall within a certain temperature before, before it's tested or gets run through. That's unfortunately where that stands right now. Last couple of things, um, again, the, the EOC continues to meet, um, all focused on, mostly on vaccines at this point. Um, there's another, um, clinic this weekend, um, I think another one scheduled that's tentatively for the following week. Um, the ones this weekend. I think there's some, I think there's something going on Friday, um, their second doses for the, for thirty, I think it was thirty-three doses that were given out about a month ago now. Um, they were part of the, um, I think it was the one B, one group. Um, since our last meeting, you've probably seen the updates or heard the, the way that was, it was laid out, the plan, vaccine plan was laid out before based on these, um, breakdown of, um, essential, I don't want to say essential, but they, they grouped the, the first responders. Um, then they had group one B, which broken down three other ways, um, the seventy, I think seventy and plus were the one V one, um, high risk and then the critical workers, um, they completely changed that and gone to this just age-based. Um, and so it's now, I think this week opened or tomorrow opened sixteen of ours. Um, so when the medical center gets its hundred doses, um, it's good in that sense because they can, if they got the hundred doses and got the wall of seventy, um, they'd have to stop until the whole state was ready to go to the, to the next phase. So, uh, we're able to jump right into that sixty plus, I think they're, they're thinking they'll be able to get two allotments to fill out the seventies and sixties. Um, we are working on collectively, um, the town and the medical center working on trying to draft something for a different exception. They did get an exception to, if they got a hundred doses and sixty of them fell within the allowed vaccine rollout plan that they're in, the phase they're in now, that the other forty, cause they're here, could go into other people at high risk. So they had gotten that exception, but that was the next day this change happened. So we're trying to submit something to see, is there another way to get this exception, um, to, to one, move into a lower age group? But also look at it from a risk perspective, you know, and everyone's asking, can, can we just keep getting them? Um, you know, we can, they can put them in people's arms, we just wanna keep getting them, everyone wants to get them. So we are working on that with them to try and see if there's a way to continue to get an exception, given our location, given how hard it is to access the public sites. That is something we're trying to work with them on. Uh, the climate council, um, does continue to meet, the working group I was on, uh, had a meeting scheduled, I think, the last week, but it's now for next week. Um, to follow up on that, they are looking for, um, we'll be looking for some feedback from communities on some of those next steps. So when I get that, I'll bring that back to you. And then the, the federal issues paper that MMA puts together every year. Um, in this year, the emphasis being on COVID response and communities remain, so every state kinda submits a few stories from their state. Um, Rhino Haven was asked to be part of that paper this year from, from Maine, I think there were six, five or six other towns responses in there. Um, and they, they interviewed a few of us, um, so that's in there with that, um, you know, there's also an opportunity to meet with the federal delegation. Usually they take a group of people down to DC, but that's obviously gonna be all virtual this year, um, so I have to follow up from that. But a big kudos to the team and, and board and supporting all of their work on that and the community's willingness to do their part and all of it. We've been very lucky in all this.
No, that, that EOC is an excellent team, you know, I sat, I sit in on most of those meetings still, you know. I'm not, I'm not a member, I'm not a member of the team, I, I strictly am there as a liaison between this board and that team. Hey, reporter members. I have one thing, a interesting piece of legislation that brought to my attention the other day, and I think Jake knows about it as well. From, I don't have to get this name right because it's by the name, Billy Bob, uh, talking, talking man, like that? About banning off, banning wind projects in state waters. I think it would be very important for this town that, yeah, if they're looking for community support, maybe if you could look into it, A, you see if they're looking for spot, community sponsorship, uh, essential legislation.
But it's usually at the public hearings, I don't know if this one hasn't been scheduled yet or it's already scheduled, I know it's been coming up, um, Jason.
It gets tomorrow and the next day.
So it worked pretty well.
I think we've got, um, between Rhino and Stonehenge, there's a three hundred fifty letter written so far.
Okay.
I wrote mine on behalf of, of all the fishermen in the whole city, all the whole city council that.
Okay, so we, we're probably on top of it and we're.
I mean, as long as we're not talking about how great they are.
Yeah, right, but yeah, I hope, I hope nobody.
I mean, but someone said that, um, they don't know if it's constitutional, the bill or something, the way it's written, so it might have to get any right, so.
This is, this is not the one, the governor made a.
Ten-year moratorium.
Ten-year moratorium, so this one would be for, what's the one that he's proposing?
Forever.
Oh, forever, okay.
I guess until it gets repealed or whatever, that's what, this, this one is for. And someone was telling me that there's some language in there that, that might have to change or it might get kicked down, kicks, you know, until they can get it just right, I, I don't exactly know what's not constitutional, but some part of.
As it's prohibiting, uh, public utility from.
Yeah, there you go, yeah. They gotta, they gotta change the language in it somehow, I guess.
That, all these, that's what I said at the meeting the other night.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was trying to think of what the language was, yeah.
And I butchered it, but you get the idea.
Did you want to mount, monitor that for now or you want to try and?
I mean.
Board feel that they have a, a statement they want presented that if it is still.
I mean, I, I don't speak for us as a board, but I think that if we could, yeah, be in support of banning wind projects in state waters, I think that's an excellent idea. I don't think anybody who has spent five minutes of research thinks that wind energy is, or especially offshore wind energy is a green approach for an alternative.
Especially when the water is pretty valuable in other respects. I mean, it's not like there's nothing going on, I mean, there isn't very much, or any spots that I can think of between here and three miles that doesn't have a web strap on it at some point during the year.
What, and what about the concern about waves? You know, that's, they can do this with, you know, that's, the whole thing's just frustrating.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe that you have a way to find out when the hearing is, that we can send an email or something, just send the town while even this in support of the bill. That's all I have. I heard it was gonna happen this week, but then I heard that stuff about the language, so I don't know exactly now what's happening, I haven't heard anymore.
That's all I have. Anybody else?
I don't know if mine falls so much on the town, but where, where you guys, um, did the sledding hill? There's quite a lot of room there by the rocks, like where they, is there any way to make like a little parking area there?
At the top of the hill?
Yeah, like by the ball ground. There's quite, I mean, there's quite a bit of space there before that big tree that, there's just a few rocks there and there's nothing like, is there any way you're maybe making that into three or four parking spots? Because, I think, there isn't really any place to park when you go sledding, I'd tell you that.
Yeah, now you have to park at the church, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
That was one of Andrew's concerns.
Well, I mean, why couldn't you turn that little, like, right there?
You mean right where the benches are on the top of the hill?
Not, you wouldn't have to move the benches.
No, but I mean, you talk about that area where the no parking signs are.
Yeah, if, if you took those out and put, pushed the rocks out, you could pull, three or four cars, right, and then it was all saying.
Yeah, if that's what the town wants to seek, we can ask, you know, go to the DOT and get their permit to open up the highway, you know, the highway and create a.
Or make it a state road.
Um, but that, I mean, that's a main street, it's a blind hill there, if you're coming from town, people do go way too fast through there, I just didn't wanna see us. That was one of my concerns early on, where will people park? And if you got kids coming in and out of cars right there, can't really get off the road. The Maine Coast Heritage Trust would have to weigh in on that now that they've got the easement on it.
Yeah, no, I think.
We can certainly look into it.
I think, yeah, I mean, we did discuss that when I was, um, trying to get the hill, you know, when we talked about getting the hill cleared. But I just assumed that people would, you know, walk from the archeological church or maybe park at the ball ground.
Walk.
Walk across the ball ground and go.
Well, I mean, we went there one day and you could walk across the water, cause there was some, some water on it. So, I mean, maybe there's a way to get a trail through the bushes or something from the other side, I guess.
Yeah, you know, up going past Germany, I don't know how far, we know.
It's not very, it doesn't go all the way down. I didn't know that.
Of course not.
But, um, yeah, you know. So it's gotta be some fly in the ointment.
Well, I just thought, it looked like there was plenty of room there.
Yeah, and I know, and actually, one day when there were a bunch of kids there, then people were parked in the king of ones, so then, yeah, it was creating a pretty good parking there.
Yeah.
Uh, when I, I've only been there like twice.
And I, and I happen to actually.
It just seemed like there was a lot of room there by those trees, I wasn't really.
Walking to church, kids don't even walk up hills anymore, they slide down. They get a four-wheel.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know if there's an answer to that, Jake, but, um, I think that that probably not, I don't believe we'd be able to do that there. Because it is, we have an easement.
Right.
They gave, they gave us permission to clear the hill.
So we don't own that, I thought they turned it over to the town.
They did, with easements. The restrictions on, you know, things like that, you can't pretend.
Yeah.
Through those easements.
It's in constations. But they did give us the blessing of, of, they thought that was a great idea to turn that into a sledding hill.
I'm surprised they didn't hear the word fun and say absolutely not.
Say the word what?
Fun. And say absolutely not.
No, they, they thought it was a great idea and I, and I think it's awesome, everybody just commented, ninety-nine percent of the comments have been, you know, um, really optimistic and good and, and I've only heard a couple of things about the big bad rock at the bottom. Big bad rock's been there since way before, when the kids were sliding before, but like hoping we can get that out when it dry, gets dry down there.
Between that and watching kids slide to the cemetery still, I don't know.
Yeah.
Can't imagine it's really that.
My brother, my brother had to be rushing that presenter on this hill over here.
Yeah, text, text.
Ooh, wow, didn't he get nailed?
But anyways, I think, I just thought, it just was, maybe really happy to go by and see kids sliding and kids skating and families having fun, you know, it's great.
All right, anything else, send a reporter members. Okay, seeing none, I move adjourned. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
I thank you all for attending, good evening.